To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Glad to see you all again. Sunnier than last week. I call a meeting to order. Look for a motion of agenda, amended agenda approval. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from nine seven meeting.
I read through them and everything looks good, so I would make the motion.
One second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Uh, any general public concerns? General public concerns? Seeing, hearing none, we'll keep moving along with, uh, man Scott Curran for the, we'll take the presentation of the dividend and whatever else he might have for us.
I'll give that to you here and I'll give this to Peggy. Uh, what I'm here this morning is presenting a, the second of five. So if you remember last year Clarence Hoffman from ICAP joined me at a meeting and we presented the first dividend check. Um, so what, what it is, is ICAP is designed to, during the first six years that you belong to the pool, a portion of what gets paid in as premium or contribution goes into a reserve fund. They call it their cumulative reserve fund. And that is simply what it is, is it's a reserve, reserves set, yeah, that other piece of paper that we're handing out, we break up our premiums by department. So that bottom line that I highlighted is just a breakout of how, if you choose to disseminate this dividend back in proportion to the premiums that were paid by department, then that's how each department will get the credit and the bond. Um, yeah, we have nine thousand, three hundred, is it?
Ninety-eight.
Nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars as a dividend check this year. And so basically that cumulative reserve fund is there, that goes therefore as reserves in case there's, you know, some bad years as far as overall claims in the pool. So their board evaluates that reserve fund every year. And then those that are vested in their vesting period, which is what we are now, we've done our six years and now we have a five-year vesting period that we dip, the reserve fund is adequate and then they'll release some of that back in proportion accordingly. So hopefully we can do another three years. I can make this presentation here in September for the next three years accordingly, but just real quick and wanted to say congratulations on, on that and...
Well, we promised to bring us ten thousand dollars every September.
Yeah, yeah. We're all real glad you put me on the agenda, huh? Yeah.
Right, Peggy?
That's right.
But that's all I wanted to do this morning, nothing else unless you have questions for me. I know there was, uh, I did check that, that hail claim has been closed, so hopefully the, the claim checks have been, I don't know if they came to Peggy or to Ben, but, uh, I can make sure that, that those have been sent at that point, so.
Okay.
Okay? Any others?
Thank you very much, Scott. Thank you.
So that's, there's the, and then that's how you would break it up.
All right.
If you wanted to do that.
Thank you very much.
In the essence of time, means we seem to have a little. How about we move down to our other agenda items, either the claim agreement or the approval of claims? I'd suggest...
I had the claim, looked through the claims. The only question I had was on that agreement for the, the cap place out west.
I think we need to put that on the agenda for next week to terminate that lease.
Um, but the total for the general is two, five, four, four, three, four, fifty-seven? And drainage is sixty-two, seven, seventeen, sixty-one?
That's what I had. Oh, second to...
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Claims approved. Now, if we can get the information on the 20E law enforcement agreement with the city of Gilmore City.
Okay, I sent a bunch of these out at the beginning of the new fiscal year. Um, the term was up on those cities that didn't vote it through as an actual tax levy. So the city of Gilmore City has returned theirs. Um, previously you had like three other cities that you signed. I think there's maybe one more out there. So there's two copies that need to be signed, excuse me, or reaching across, you can all get these out of your way.
Okay.
Okay. Well, authorized the chairman to sign the 20E law enforcement agreement with the city of Gilmore City.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fast.
Peggy, you look at the link on those, did it have a couple of years or what?
It's a five-year term.
Five-year, alright.
And increases, is it five percent a year?
Yes, five percent per year.
Yeah, which sounds like a lot, but we started out at ten dollars a head.
Right.
Where most people were, counties were charging fifty dollars to two hundred dollars a head at that time.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And with the increase in what we're paying for?
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement.
I think it's on... They're like twelve dollars.
What the increase is.
What the increase is over here, yep. It's like tw-...
Twelve dollars per capita.
Okay. How about...
Gilmore City's amount is thirty-three seventy, three thousand three hundred and seventy-two. And this goes through twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry, it's only two-year contract because of the fact that the, um, other entities that have voted it through, theirs is only through twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
So we were having, these contracts expire at one time, those expire at the same, this would link them all together, so it'd all be at the same time.
Which are the official ones to sign?
Both of them. One copy will go back to Gilmore and one will stay with us.
Okay. Well, we prepare to bend or move ahead. Are you okay? Going a little earlier than later?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So the first item that I've got on the agenda is an application to work in the county's right-of-way with Northwest Telephone Broker Association. They are putting in new fiber optic line around the West Bend area and they plan on putting in a line down past McKnight's Point, uh, past Zogs, Craig Van Worts, and I can't think of who the guy is that lives south of Craig. But that's as far as they're running, basically a, a mile south of, uh, the highway to the corner.
They're staying in the back eighteen inches, it says.
Yeah, uh, I wrote that in there, um, outer eighteen inches for the installation of the fiber optic line and they've got plans showing where they plan on boring. Uh, I talked to Kevin McPee last week, who is going to be doing the work. And he got a copy of his insurance and everything else, so.
Okay.
So is that just, when they go a mile south, does that just sit out there until someone wants to hook onto it and they take it that dir- or the direction from there in there?
I would assume so. I mean, they're gonna run down and hook onto those, uh, those three acreages and then if people further south want to hook onto it, uh, I think at that point they would extend...
That would be the extension.
If there's, if there's enough of, of demand or demand, but...
I'm making a little motion to approve that working the right-of-way for Northwest Telephone Communication Association.
One second.
Any further discussion?
I got a question.
There you go.
So now like when they go through there and they just knife it in, don't they? And they break, break tiles in the right-of-way?
They're responsible.
That's what you're gonna say.
We've been able to come back on...
Are they good about picking up the tab on those things when they find where they have done that?
I don't know about this particular company, uh, 'cause I've never dealt with them, but anybody else, whether it's Webster, Calhoun, or, uh...
Okay. That's usually, we find out so often, we dig them up and the fiber optic goes right through the tile.
Yeah. I mean, when you can see an intake in the ditch, it's pretty easy for them to know that they've got a bore underneath it, but how many of these private tiles?
Do they hit the...
Come out of the field or, or, you know, go into the road ditch that if there's not an intake, you don't even know that they're there.
Right, right. Okay. Just, just that question, if they do...
All right, so it's first and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The second item is what we've kind of been talking about lately as far as updating our road crossing policy.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
So the one is our road crossing policy compared to the surrounding counties. Uh, I did this back in twenty-eighteen when we did update our policy to include boring underneath the highways. Um, when we did it, Hamilton County and Webster County also updated their policies, uh, to include fifty percent of the cost of the boring up to five thousand dollars. As you guys know, the cost of boring has gone through the roof to cross a highway. Um, I think the standard cost pretty much now is anywhere between twenty and forty thousand dollars, depending on the side of the line that you're looking at putting underneath the road and how long we have to run. Talking with Kusut County, they cover seventy percent of the cost of the boring. I talked to Hamilton County last week, they're looking at updating their policy as well because they're running into the same thing that we are, kind of with, uh, Bruce and them wanting to come across the road. We don't have it specifically stated in our policy that to go underneath a blacktop and have to bore. I would like some language in there that says something like that. I mean, given the recent accident we had on a short stretch of gravel, you know, for this crossing of, of Bruce's for the private tile, it's gonna cost the county roughly fifteen thousand dollars if we take their contractor's price plus us hauling the rock and then us coming back and doing an asphalt patch afterwards. Why not just turn around and spend that same type money to go underneath the roadway and keep the road open without having to close it multiple times?
Plus the safety issue, it's a little bit better safety-wise.
Absolutely. So like I said, the first one, uh, sheet that I handed you is a copy of the road crossing policy compared to the other counties. The other one that I just passed you is my draft of a new permit for putting drainage across the right-of-way. Currently, we've just done the work in the right-of-way permit and then there's been like ten other sheets that we've had to include. This, I talked to, like I said, I talked to Kusut County and Hamilton County and they use kind of a single sheet format like this on front and back. But with all of, all of this additional stuff, um, it's the, the policy that I emailed you guys that, that I'd like to review and possibly update. It's the three pages here. That basically says that, it's the same language as the rest. I mean, we have to follow the Iowa Code three eighteen as well as Iowa Drangewell, uh, four sixty-eight with regards to crossings. Bruce and them would still have the ability to go through the hoops that they are right now as far as getting all of the engineering reports and everything else and turning them into Peggy and applying for a hearing. And then Peggy would set the hearing date, contact the adjacent property owners, have them have the ability to apply, uh, file for damages and then you would have the hearing and determine whether or not they would be allowed to cross the road at that location. Or there's what we've always had in the past, is a, the, the quick and dirty version where it's basically, don't ask, don't tell. If you wanna come across our gravel road, the county will pay fifteen hundred dollars towards the cost of the material and the, and the contractor to dig across the road and we don't ask any questions.
You don't have to...
File all of the engineering reports showing how many acres are coming through here. You don't have to have the hearing. It's, it's a lot less burdensome, I guess I would say, on, on the applicant. It's faster. I mean, at, at this rate right now, by the time they get all the information in and you have a hearing, it'll be debatable on whether or not they have time to come across the road this year.
Yeah.
Uh, I talked to Brett Legbold last week, he's trying to put all the information together, but I assume, you know, by the time you schedule a hearing, you're talking a few weeks out 'cause you have to advertise it. And I believe the, the very last day of the year that you would want somebody to cut across your road would be November fifteenth. This, we've never really had a per-state policy with, uh, the secondary roads. We had a resolution that we updated back in twenty-eighteen, but we've never had a formal policy like this one right here. Like I said, I spoke with Kusut County on this one. Their language is very similar to what our unofficial policy was, uh, with the single sheets, the ways that we had four in the right-of-way permit and then like six different sheets that we had to pull together anytime anybody wanted to do a road crossing. This would be a three-page policy. I know Bruce said, uh, ours was kind of more spread out and, uh, a lot more wordy and harder to understand. This is more clear, concise, spells out what they have to do, what they can get, uh, what's listed in Iowa Code four sixty-eight, um, as far as steps that they need to complete. I guess what I'm, I'm looking for is, the only, the only language that we would change is do we wanna up our amounts from the fifteen hundred dollars that we pay towards a gravel road crossing? And do we want to cap, uh, the fifty, fifty percent that you guys mentioned last week towards the cost of a boring? You know, uh, right now, Kusut County doesn't have a cap, it's seventy percent of whatever your, whatever your bill is to bore it. So if it's fifty thousand dollars to bore it, do they pay seventy percent of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, depending on what side of the town you go with, it could be huge.
Right. I think our most expensive one was for, uh, this last one that they did on eleven sub five. Where they want it underneath for Brad D. Blacktop, I think that was forty thousand dollars as far as that, part of that drainage project. That's the most that we've paid.
And how big was that pipe? Eighteen?
It was bigger.
Bigger than that?
Yeah. I don't recall, 'cause I, I never saw the plans, I just saw the bill.
I'd say it's thirty-inch probably, like a, pretty good size.
I know, I know it was a, a larger size 'cause we were down towards the bottom end of, of that tile line project.
Wasn't it that on the top end?
I thought it went, doesn't it go a couple more miles up?
Not too much further.
It, it only went up a four hundred yard.
Maybe it was, maybe it was a two foot.
I don't know. I, I was, it was, it all right, it's next.
Forty thousand dollars to bore it for that one.
So on this policy with the boring, speaking of boring, um, it's curious what Kusut County has done, but it speaks to what your explanation was, that you're paying for it one way or the other.
Yeah.
Get in more money towards, and this, this could be a, this is for clarification, this could still be the, they wanna get drainage underneath the road and still not go back to all of the drainage district code. They're just saying, we're gonna bore whatever size is going underneath a hard surface road. It's how much, you know, is the county willing to pay towards that?
Right. So if, if Bruce and them were running their private tile and they were having trouble pulling all of this information together, they could say, you know what, forget it, we're just gonna go with the fifty percent of the boring cost up to the ten thousand dollars. Or if we had no cap, it would be fifty percent of the boring cost and we'll pay for the other fifty percent.
Otherwise, according to Iowa Code, they can still go through the process that they're going through.
And it'll cut the road if they wanna do.
Well, and that's where our policy would, would dictate and say, we're gonna bore it.
Okay.
Because it's a highway.
That's, that's one of your real priorities.
We're, we're gonna limit our exposure and if they go through all of the steps, go through the hearing and everything else, Humboldt County would pay a hundred percent of the boring cost.
Yes.
But then it would, like I said, like we were saying, it would limit our potential exposure by having a, a patch.
The only thing I thought is if you put a cap on it, they'll probably be coming back to us every time they go with something that's gonna be bigger than say a standard twelve-inch tile or, you know, so all of a sudden we're putting a twenty-four and the boring cost is sixty thousand.
Better to put a cap on it. Or, uh, I think there's language at the very bottom of the contract that basically says that you guys can go in and negotiate.
That, is there in there? I never caught that.
Number eight, um, on the third page.
Oh, yeah.
Says that the board supervisors reserves the right to negotiate any type of cost-sharing arrangement with the applicant and/or to install a through-the-crossing with county staff or, or not a contractor. So in other words, if, if their contractor was, uh, overpriced, in our opinion, we could hire our owner to up with county staff.
Okay.
But if you're looking at a, a blacktop and boring...
Yeah, well, it'd be us.
There's only so many guys that do the work.
I like, appreciate your due diligence and getting some of this tied together. So I, as I have looked through, I think the biggest, uh, decision is where do you put the cap, the cap well?
Yes.
On, yeah, well, either, either, even if, just take your right-of-way gravel road, do you go a little bit more, bump that up a little bit higher than the fifteen hundred? Like you said, the quick and easy, dirty, 'cause other big costs keep going up, but yet it, it makes it a lot simpler. They might just be, you know, a relatively simple job and if it was, say, two thousand, they'd say, well, well, we should just get that permit and get the, you know, okay, and we can just do it.
Right.
And on the boring, it's, it's curious, Kusut is up to seventy percent cost at border, but...
And, and no cap.
And no cap.
But getting back to Ben's description, it probably is still a little bit less money
than it could be if they, you know, if it's this drainage project or whatever and they go through the, the drainage code.
Mm-hmm.
To get to that, then you're gonna pay for all of the boring underneath the hard surface road.
Which, which they can, they can still go down.
They can, but this does streamline it, it makes it a little simpler for everybody. Yes, the county pays a little bit more money for the, okay, well, you know, whatever the cost is, we'll take the cost share, boring cost share, that, that, you know, we're better doing it, but it, uh, we would encourage them to just go that route and make it simpler for everybody.
Well, what would the cost be then on that open cut that they did done by God's heart, roughly?
Because that one's a surface drain?
You can't bore that.
You wouldn't bore that.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, what, what are we gonna have in that compared to what you're spending on if you had to?
So for that one down there, we've got roughly two thousand, between two and three thousand dollars worth of concrete.
Terrible.
Two loads of rock to backfill, 'cause it's only six, six or eight inches of rock on top of the pipe. Uh, we had four guys out there for a half a day for labor. I think I had it budgeted at one point for like sixty thousand, if you figure a contractor coming in and doing the job, we'll probably have it done for, yeah, but then you figure our labor and equipment and everything else.
Yeah, and then we got a patch.
And then we'll have to go back and we'll have to do a patch. Usually we, I mean, typically we've waited a year from when we've done any of these open cuts through the road to allow it to settle and then we come back and we have blacktop service, do a four to six inch asphalt overlay and usually it costs three to five, well, for the, for that small size, probably three grand to do a patch.
Well, at this point, just looking at the wording in the agenda, so we've, uh, reviewed the changes possibly. There's no action stated today, so we're...
No, I, I guess I just wanted to give you guys proof for thought.
Would, I really think you did a great job of tying this all together and, you know, 'cause you've kind of been through the wringer on some of this stuff to try to figure it out. Would it be fair to, like through this for a week and...
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda next week?
And, and...
Mainly I need direction on, you know, what do you wanna set your caps at?
Well, maybe this is just discussion, 'cause we can certainly say, I, I'm only
kind of intrigued by Kusut. I mean, it's seventy-five percent of the cost at board, yeah, and, and, you know, it can be a lot of money, but yet it can be a big cost savings as well.
Yeah.
If they do it. Or, like this is just reading through all the information, if it's fifty percent, don't cap it.
That, that was my thought, 'cause I have a feeling that we're to be getting calls while that, every time it's gonna be a more than that and they're gonna, you know...
Want to negotiate the one.
Yeah, we're gonna be negotiating constantly.
But we, and the negotiating thing is written in as a credit policy.
We still have that option if we...
Yes, you still can, even what you come up with for the...
And then again, maybe we should have the caps, we have that negotiating power.
We're, I mean, we're not talking a large amount, I mean, since we passed this in twenty-eighteen, we've had two applications to bore, Harold Trask and, and a gentleman down by Pioneer. Harold never ended up doing it because we had a wet season and when he came back the next year, it was like thirty thousand instead of ten thousand to, to bore under the road. Uh, the gentleman down by Pioneer did do it this year, but we've never seen a bill for it.
So would you say, I mean, the...
It, it doesn't happen very often that somebody wants to bore, so it's not like the, the county's gonna be looking at spending a large amount...
Yeah, every year.
Every year to be doing this. You know, typically we get, I don't know, six, eight permits a year.
Tile crossings.
To do a tile crossing on a gravel road, so if you wanted to move that to two thousand to give a little bit more wiggle room, um...
Now, that part I'd probably be agree with.
So I guess our thought process to get this in place by next week, the maybe percentage in caps on boring, maybe bumping up to like two thousand on a secondary road cut, was there anything else that, 'cause really besides that, that I think it's pretty well put together otherwise?
I think on the, on the permit application, they put some language in there about, uh, putting intakes in, in the road ditch.
I think you have that, don't you?
On, on this one here.
Yeah.
And then, and then paying the, the farmer additionally for an intake in the road ditch, 'cause that's really the only advantage that the county's gonna see by paying anything is to have an intake that's gonna drain the road ditch. Otherwise, we're paying the money for a tile that doesn't benefit secondary roads.
Right.
I think we ought to have a cap on the boring though. I don't know if there would be a cap on it.
I'm fine with it, 'cause if it only happens once every couple of years, it's just another meeting.
And, and like I said, if you wanna cap, do you wanna move it up? Do you wanna leave it at ten grand?
I think it is.
Now it's at five grand. Like I said, Webster County and Hamilton County followed suit behind us back in twenty-eighteen. Um, Hamilton County talked, I haven't talked to Webster County, but talked to Hamilton County last week, they're in the process of updating their policy as well. So he wants to know basically what we're deciding before he takes it to his board.
Yeah. I, I just think the cap should be like fifteen, 'cause I have a feeling those borings are gonna be thirty thousand.
Cause it's fifty percent of what...
Whatever the, whatever the building paid amount is.
Yeah.
So it's up to, but it's capping the...
Or a portion of it.
Our portion would be capped at...
Capped at ten thousand?
Cap, well, that's what it listed at right now.
Does it, so does it read?
Do you wanna go to fifteen?
Does it read that that's the most? Does it read that that's the most, that the fifty percent would be, would be ten thousand? So in other words, it was a twenty thousand dollar.
We'd pay ten.
If it was eighty thousand dollars.
You'd pay ten. I think that's gotta be a bit higher, but I still think you could have a cap on it.
Yeah.
Was it fifteen? Okay. Done.
All right.
Well, something we can get it.
Approved.
Next week.
I'll update the language and email it to you guys this afternoon and see you for the rest of the week to review it.
Colin's good, here, these two copies, I saw them. I'm sure I didn't miss any. You have anything else, Ben? Good work, thank you. And you look very professional today. I feel like you've been with some kind of meeting this afternoon or something.
Well, we're putting asphalt down on Lone Tree today and from there, we're moving up to P twenty and we got three culverts, old culvert crossing locations that we're gonna kind of smooth out if that is settled, so.
So you're fixing that bump there at the intersection?
Where it transitions from concrete to asphalt down on Lone Tree. And then, outside Randy Watkins, I think is a rough crossing. There's another dredge ditch about two miles south that's a rough crossing. And then, years back, the county put in a four foot diameter culvert under the road and that's a rough transition onto, so we're gonna play call those today.
Awesome.
So on our claims, we have both shops having some hail damage?
Yeah, back in twenty eighteen, Jim got that two weeks ago.
Well, I wanted to browbeat him a little bit while I was here.
In his defense, he has the material purchase shortly thereafter.
So is that on the cold one behind, or is that?
Yeah, it's on the cold one behind.
We got any others that are, that you got damaged on?
No, we're good right now, so.
All right. I just saw that on the claim today, so.
You get good contractors, sometimes it takes a little while.
There you go.
Good man.
Well.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah.
In the essence of the agenda, at nine o'clock or in the past, we have the public hearing on proposal entering the general obligation, county purpose and refunding loan agreement.
Probably should open the public hearing.
Yes, I'd make mention to open it, public hearings.
A second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
All right.
All those, public hearing is open.
Okay, Mike Maloney would like to be on the phone, so I will.
Okay.
Here's a couple copies for the press, if they would like them. When you done that, and here's my top drawer, here's all my packet, I forgot to grab it out. Yep, that right there. Thank you. Good morning, Mike, Piggy Rice from Humboldt County, how are you? Good, are you available to speak with the board? All right, hold on. Okay, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, good morning, folks.
Morning, Mike.
We have officially opened the public hearing.
Very good.
The board has paperwork, Dorsey and Whitney. Anything in particular at this time, Mike, that we need to let you know?
I'm assuming that the public hearing process, it is just there to gain authority in terms of being able to proceed. The other action today that you'll have is authorizing use of the official statement, that's the operating document for the transaction that we use to market the bond to investors. The three other moving pieces that were related to this are, one, I mentioned that instead of doing a rating because of the size, current interest rate environment, and the fact that we're looking at a ten year borrowing rather than getting a rating, we went and secured a quote for bond insurance from the main providers and secured the low bid on Friday. That's the dam, that's built American Mutual, that has the stamp on the front of that operating document, so that's fine.
I did not give that to the board because you said we would be addressing that later, so, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, you don't need to, if that's a, we only use it if we move forward type of thing, there's no cost for securing that. That's just, I wanted to let you know what that was, so that's there, no action on that today. The two other pieces, one was the thing with the people that close your current debt, so one that was Bank Island, we did visit with those folks, and as I mentioned with the board last month, we'll make sure that they get priority of orders, so if there's any of the bonds that they want, they can have as much as they want at the market clearing price. And then the second piece was working with Motorola to get a final redemption amount. We've got the ball rolling with that, we'll get that all knocked out as well. So I know that was a priority for the board to have that completed before the payment was due in November, so. From administrative standpoint, I think we're rolling into good shape at this point.
Mike, Rick Peterson here, I had one question, I wanted to clarify it to make sure I heard this right.
Yes.
We are looking at, part of this bond is five hundred thousand for their conservation department and we specified to them that it needed to be spent on the dam project.
Yes.
If they do not come up with a scenario to correct the problem with the dam, what, do they have a time limit on that project to get the money used?
So, actually, there's a couple pieces to that. The first is, the typical spend down requirement is a three years, but you would qualify as a small issuer and when it's under five million dollars, there's not continued reporting on that to the IRS for that purpose. So there is some relay there, that's one. The second piece is typically, your bond attorneys will structure the public hearing that you're doing today with some broad language. That should encompass a number of approaches to using those project costs. In the event you did shift gears in the future and instead of for the dam, wanted to apply to something else, it may already qualify under the language you're using, but if it did not, we could have a public hearing in the future to change some of the purpose, those use of the proceeds of the bond. That sounds, you know, kind of strange, but it happens more frequently than you think because often, project costs can change, you know, we can have other sources for something. When you're talking about multiple uses of the bonding dollars, sometimes just changing a small portion of it after the fact is necessary. And I know we've got met, for example, the city of the Ford Dodge in the past for a basic borrowing. So there is some flexibility down the road from that standpoint.
Okay, that clears that up.
Sure.
Wasn't there also, we were gonna ask, that if, this is Sandy Maloney, if they didn't use the money, then if it was decided we weren't gonna use that money, that would just go back?
Yes.
Right away, I mean, whenever we decide, if it was a three years or whatever.
Can you hear that, Mike?
A little bit, can someone just clear it, summarize it real quick for me, Rick?
Sandy was mentioning that if they don't use this money for the dam, we wanted them to, well, we actually, we want to give it to them, so we take that money and pay back to the bond sooner.
That's true.
Okay.
Exactly, so any of the bond proceeds can always stay within the bond, right? So let's say you just, you didn't do that, you didn't want to do that project, you didn't wanna do anything different with those dollars, they can go back to debt repayment.
Okay.
And that's clean from a technical.
We have two things to explain.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing, reading through this, Mike, that we have an amount not to exceed two million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars attached to all this.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to, and I wanna get through to your questions before, you know, talking remaining timeline and any other considerations. But with the numbers that I had for you folks from our last conversation, it's about two point five million is what we'd actually borrow, we always like to have some cushion there. I guess what I was hoping for is two things to leave today's discussion with you. One is, just knowing that the amounts are good, that we've got things sized appropriately on some of those other pieces of the project, I just wanna make sure that's settled from your standpoint. One, and then the second point is that I would have asked and say, hey, are we good to stay on our planned timeline, where we would finalize pricing a week from today? Or if you guys want another week to review and we come back and finalize things on the twenty eighth? Just only wanna make sure folks are super comfortable with everything on the process. So those were the two items I wanted to lay out and just make sure we're on the same page from those standpoints.
Is everybody pretty comfortable with the process and timeline? I'd suggest that we move it forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because they lay it, I think we pretty much talked it all through.
I don't believe, looking around the room, Mike, that there's any particular questions on timeframe, timeline.
Okay, okay. Could I just, and I'm just, I know maybe we kick gloves here, but would you guys mind if I just went down the line on this project cost to make sure on next Monday, I bring you guys everything that you were looking for?
That's perfectly fine, yes.
I'll go quick. For the LEC stockware that was fifty thousand even?
Sounds right, correct.
For the communications equipment related to pagers, radios and handhelds, three hundred and thirty seven thousand?
Anybody have a thought on that one?
Well, that's the fire department, correct?
Right, is that, sounds correct to you?
Yeah, I think that combined a couple line items, correct.
Okay.
The five hundred thousand for the dam improvement security reference, I know that's good. And then I had a hundred and eighty thousand for body cams and laptops.
Car cameras?
Car cameras.
Well, car cameras, body cameras.
And laptops.
Yeah, and laptops, it's one eighty.
Yeah.
Over on that.
Yeah.
Good, but the only number I think that I need to refine is just, like I said, Motorola's lease and we're gonna be within a few dollars there, there's not a full lot of change. Then as it's rated, about two point five, two point five, two million, based on today's rates and your falling rates that we were, that we were, you know, coming in today, about one point three, four percent is what we're looking at for everything, the refinancing and the new project cost. So, pretty favorable bill at that point. So our process here, I think we'd ask Peggy just if you can turn around the executed resolutions that Dorsey said that are on the agenda here today for us, as soon as possible via email, just scan a copy of those in. That starts our process and we can follow it through for next Monday for the board here.
Okay, we sure can. The only thing I wanna bring up is we were talking, we had met with the fire departments and they have a grant for a hundred and forty two thousand. And that for their, and it's a grant specifically for the radios that they need. And that grant money has to be paid directly to Motorola, so we need to back that off of the amount that we wanna take.
Off of the three thirty seven?
Right, but in return, the fire department has also asked that truck radios would, for the first one, two, three, four, five, would go up to three instead of two. They need those for Renwick, Bode, Livermore, Humboldt and Gilmore City. So that would then increase the three thirty seven to three fifty nine five. So you'd take the one forty two off of that and it'd be two hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred. Do I have that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Two seventeen five.
Right, two seventeen five, instead of the three thirty, three hundred and thirty seven that we were originally talking about. Okay, but the three thirty seven went up to what? Three fifty nine five.
But then grant money's gonna come in and pay that down.
Right, probably two thousand comes in as grant money.
Right, and that one forty two gets paid directly to Motorola, it doesn't even come into the Humboldt County.
So that would drop to two seventeen five hundred.
Correct, for what we would want to put on the bond.
Did you hear that, Mike?
I did, I did. If I just do two seventeen five, I think we know what that's supposed to be there, that's helpful.
Okay.
Scott, do you agree with those numbers roughly?
Yeah, we talked about that the other night. And so far, on the grants, Odison, Humboldt, Bode and Livermore have been approved for the full amount. Gilmore City, Bradgate and Renwick are all pending, they are going, the way they talk down there, we're going to get that. And if that, if that does go through, that would put us right in the hundred and forty two thousand range for the grants.
So these numbers kind of jive with what you looked at?
And what we're looking at is, like we all talked, the new radio system, we can't just switch half of them. Okay, say if you got six trucks and you get three radios. You got three radios that can communicate and the other three can't. Because if they switch over to the new system, I mean, it's a bad deal that we can't switch, you know, do this over a period of time, but once it's switched, the radios will only be able to communicate, the new style radios will be the only one to be able to communicate. Now, we can still use the old system for on scene.
To talk between trucks and stuff.
Between people on scene, as far as being able to talk. Okay, say your first three out trucks have new radios in them. They can call the LEC and say, hey, we're going out. The fourth and fifth trucks or whatever cannot talk to the LEC because they do not have the new system in.
They'd have to relay through the trucks that do have the new system.
And the bad thing about that is, if the trucks on the old system, the radios will be doing bad. But they do not communicate, or how do I wanna say it? They do not scan between the new system and the old system, so.
They'd have to turn it back.
They have to, so if the guys with the old radios wanna talk to the new radios, the only way they can communicate is the guys in the new radios would switch theirs and they have no way of knowing that these guys are wanting to get hold of them, is the bad thing about it.
Unless they keep their old radios in the truck.
Yes.
So they have two sets of radios in the truck. That'd be the option, so they'll still have communication, so that would work.
And the only, another thing we were looking at too is if we had, say, another lightning strike down here and took the system out, are you gonna put the old system back in also or just the new system? And that's if the old system goes completely down and then we don't have, you know, just, we don't have communication with the old system.
Right.
Is what we're, we don't, I mean, we're just looking at different options of what, what can we, can't we do? It's a lot of money all at once, like I said, it'd be a lot nicer if this, if we could've done this over a five year period or something, but once it's switched, it's switched.
But as far as what it is today and with all the discussion and the dollar amounts, you're agreeable that?
Yeah.
What Sandy had brought up and figured through. So does that mean that we really need to alter anything on the dollar amounts, the bond wise with that? I mean, we know the protocol with the grant money and, you know, the amount of equipment cost. Does that really mean that we need to worry about changing the up to not to exceed amount on the bond?
No, I don't think so.
Just more clarification from how money.
Just the way it has to be spent of the bond.
Yeah.
For the grant, excuse me.
Yeah, it's, I just reran it just here real quick for you, it just basically drops about a hundred thousand dollars off of what we'll actually borrow. So it's nature not to exceed, just, I've already adjusted the sizing accordingly for you.
Okay.
Okay, well, that was good discussion, so that we're not missing anything.
Right, we just wanna make sure.
Yeah, another question we did have is, that, the little departments are not gonna be able to pay this back. Is this basically giving this money to the fire departments? Is that where we're at on this, or is it?
Well, I think it is, yeah, basically.
Okay, because the little fire departments that give five or ten thousand dollar a year budget are never gonna.
They can't afford it.
They can't afford it.
This is historically or referencing other counties that have put in this new system, which will be.
Because it's something that's being force fed by the state.
Yeah.
And they have done. Kind of like it's your choice.
Right.
Very similar to what we're discussing right now, where they have helped out the small fire department. small fire departments, realizing, like you said, Scott, that it's a switch over, they need the communication, and they don't have the funds to, you know, if it was one radio or something, it's different, but it's, it's a big amount of money that they can never, they just don't have that in their budgets from year to year.
You can't make that many pancakes.
Yeah, no, exactly right, not enough fundraisers.
Yeah, we have looked into maybe some FEMA money. Right now with the Corona and the ratio, I don't know that we'd ever get any FEMA money.
Not so spiffy.
No.
But no, I think that is correct, is that, I think to answer Scott's question from everybody, that's the way that's set up.
I think that's the only way we can do it.
Yeah, we've got to look at the safety part, but everybody's got to be able to communicate with each other always, we're going to have problems down the road.
And we'll keep our fingers crossed that we don't have another lightning strike.
Correct.
I mean, if we do get one, I don't know if we'll back it over. We could, we could, yeah, no, we could.
Okay, well, good clarification. So, moving forward with the bonding thing, um, what do we need to proceed with?
Any other comments?
Nope, any other comments?
Yeah, I'll have to check.
I got one from, uh, Gary Keenus. He, uh, commented about, um, the dam. And, uh, he's opposed to borrowing the 500,000 there. And then not using it. He says, why would you buy or borrow 100,000 dollars for a house that you might buy in two or three years? And it makes sense, you know, you ain't going to borrow money for something you may not do. And that's the only comment I had for, that was negative, but, uh...
Well, to answer Gary there, uh, they need this money to do the engineering to apply for the grants.
Right.
Because if you don't have the, the engineered project, you don't get the grant. You can't even, can't even file a Florida grant money. And that's part of the reason. And they also, all these grants require that you have money that you're throwing in, matching funds or, you know, it's usually a 75, 25% match.
Yep.
So if you don't have that money, you have nothing to even start with.
Right, you're not going to get the grants, you've got to have the matching money.
Yeah.
That's the only negative comment I had was, and he couldn't be here because of an appointment today, so...
I also got that, and that's the only negative comment I've gotten. The other ones I've talked to have all been pretty positive.
And I think some of the questions asked today and before, that you, if it just doesn't go through, if you don't buy the house, if you don't fix the dam, it goes back to that repayment, so...
Yeah.
It's not that you're just going to spend it and never use it.
Right.
If you, if you do it, but I think that everyone's comments were spot on.
It's an opportunity for a 1.34% cost.
Yes, and the opportunity for grant money to do something with the project that something needs to be done.
Right, right. You've been kicking that can down the road for how many years?
So this should give it opportunity to really get a handle on it, whatever becomes of it.
Right.
Any other public commentary? There we go.
Motion closed, public hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Okay, then you have your resolution?
2020-19, taking additional action on proposal entered to adjust general obligation county purpose and refunding loan agreement.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Scott. And authorizing use of preliminary official statement in connection therewith, which I'm guessing is all of the information that we have in front of us here.
The resolution package, this is just who made the motion, who didn't make the motion.
So resolution number 20-19, on the back part of this.
Yeah.
Motion to approve resolution 20, 19, 2020-19.
I'll second Dave's motion.
All right, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fooled? Is there anything else in...
Mike, I think that's it, unless you can think of something else.
No, that's, that is good, I think that was productive, thanks for having me on today.
Thank you, I'll be in here.
I'll send a, send a copy, and, uh, before we resume the board with results, uh, a week from this morning, all right?
Very good, thank you very much, Mike.
Bye.
Thanks, guys, have a good day.
Thank you.
Take care now.
Bye.
Where's that guy out in the back though? You just settled down. Peggy, can we have him talk us down? Call security.
Yeah, we have to share up removing.
We haven't got a dime and you're already wanting to order something.
Yeah. Do I have to wait till next week then?
Let my heart flow down a bit.
It takes a while for all this stuff to come, so...
I know, I know. Peggy, when would you, I guess we should have asked that, when would, as soon as that we would get the, receive the money.
By November.
That's what I was...
October, October, we'll have it in October.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, I told her 21st, he was projecting, which is a Wednesday, closing and delivery of funds, so...
There you go.
If we see it, I'm out.
That's why I didn't want to see this pushed back a week, because the reason this all started was the original cost of the new radio system, so...
Correct, correct.
Well, are we okay to go into canvassing the elections, or should we finish up our committee reports?
Whenever you want to. Do you want to do committee reports?
How about we run through our committee reports?
You owe us all.
How about we run through the committee reports and then we finish up with the...
One, other thing, uh, I think Bruce got it, he forwarded it off to Mike Sexy at the hospital wanting in on them with radios. Now, didn't they get money? Yes, they've got radios in their ambulances and stuff ready. That's what we thought. Yeah. But he sent an email wanting to pay for radios, so...
I forwarded it to you last night, but that was the first I'd saw it.
Yeah.
He sent it on the ninth, asking for pagers and...
I think we're fine.
He should have been here a week ago or so.
Or longer. No, I, I believe we're correct with everything that's been discussed and bonded toward.
Yeah.
Okay.
But so in essence of time, we just run through our committee reports. All right, then we'll finish off with canvassing.
Appreciate it, Dave.
I had no official meetings.
I had, uh, I have a food pantry, and I hung that off on one of the other board members. I'm waiting to hear about the numbers where I was...
She ordered for 140, and I think they got rid of all but five. So 135. They were calling people out of the woodwork that normally showed up that didn't show up then.
You mean to pick up boxes?
They took five or six boxes of, or boxes of three, is what we had, a gallon of milk. They took them up to the pantry.
Well, I guess some days it's like that.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Um, Wednesday, the ninth, we had two me, I had two meetings in Waterloo for county social services. Um, one was for, the first one was for the HR, um, committee, and we made, um, we'd already made our final offer and everything to a CEO. And so then we were, um, going to talk to the internal candidate that, that was there and discuss with them, you know, how it went and what we wanted to do. Um, as far as I know, she, she was a COO, or she is a COO, and she's going to continue to be, that's Karen, um, Karen Dowell, McDowell.
Dowell?
Oh, God, Kathy Massey, but anyway, she's going to stay on as COO, and, uh, that. And then we have our big meeting with DHS afterwards, um, for county social services. They're supposed to help facilitate, um, this whole law of what we're going to be doing as far as are we staying, are we splitting off and going to a different region, are we making our new region? Basically, all she did was outlining everything that we already knew. Um, so it's still in our, our court. Of course, we're right in the middle of everybody, so we're at the mercy of Saragordo. If Saragordo stays, then we can stay with county social services. If they don't, then, then we, Humboldt County, cannot decide what to do unless Pocahontas and, right, because we're sandwiched. So it's, it's kind of a domino right now. We have another meeting in a couple of weeks with DHS to go over more of the financial. This was all about services, this meeting, and so far, we have very good services. Um, we do have a little bit of work to do on our core services, but so does every region. I mean, it isn't like we're the only region that has some work to do on our core, core services. But a lot of it is because of Iowa, we're in the Midwest, it's hard to get providers, it's hard to get psychiatrists. We do a lot by teledoc, which is great, um, but just because of where we, where we are, it's hard to get those providers to come to our area. Here's another reason why, to enhance our area.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, it all comes down to that, getting people to be willing to come in. Um, and then, um, Friday, um, Dave and I met with the fire department to talk about their radios, um, let's see, that's 11th, Peggy, I'm sorry, and, um, went over the discussion of the, their grants that they had gone over and what radios were needed and things like that.
Thanks for doing that.
You bet, you bet. I learned a lot, it was very, I like learning, it was very...
Well, they were very concerned about the ability to make sure that the grant money they got had to stay part as a grant, so that they didn't mess up the, what they'd done months ago.
Right.
So, we appreciate all the little fire departments...
Oh, yeah.
...around that are working with Humboldt, trying to make this thing work.
It's another thing that's just going to make our county stronger and better. That's all I got.
You sure?
That's it. Today's my last day to go to Waterloo, for a while.
Uh, Wednesday night, I went up to the food pantry, down to Fair Ground for the food pantry at 1:00 and helped them unload boxes and unload trucks. Then I left at 3:00 and went to the city hall for a housing meeting, uh, HCHDC, and we met there and talked, and they're proposing to have the HCDA do the administrative part of, uh, part of the housing, uh, so we can keep it all straight, we'll hire them to do it, so... Then I went back from there, I got back to the fairgrounds at 4:30 to give away food. And like I said, we gave out, I think there were five boxes of, or five group of boxes that went to the food pantry. Rest of it we gave out, took some to the vet, some out to the Humboldt homes. We got rid of all of it. Um, then Thursday, I went out and, uh, looked at some grainy junk over by Thor. Not much to see in the fields right now, so... Then Friday, I was down at the fire station, talking to the firemen. They had, uh, five departments represented down there plus Scott, so that was our new lineup. That's all I got.
Really, going back to, uh, Thursday, uh, September 3rd, that afternoon, I had a building families, uh, meeting via Zoom on the 3rd, and that was what I had, meeting-wise. Well, before we get to our canvassing, do you have anything else pertinent?
I have a few things to share. IMWCA chair comes in and does a payroll audit for us, um, and audited premium schedule, and it looks like we should get a credit to our account of 389 dollars. Um, we'll lay this up there if you guys want to look for it and search in. Um, do you remember last week when I talked to you about the social security withholding for employees?
Yeah.
I have drafted a letter to send out with the employee payroll check, advising them of what we're doing, and I'll send that around, let you guys look at that, um, if you have any suggestions for wording, but I think it's a good idea to let them know, because there are some that are well aware of what's going on and wondering what's going to happen with their social security. So you had voted not to, uh, do the withholding, and I've talked to several other counties who are doing the same, they have it. Um, and they are also sending out payroll, um, stuffers to their employees so that people are aware. Uh, no action needs to be taken. Um, you did see on the table was some notices from Massey about the official openness negotiations for the contract. I sent a copy of those off to Renee, so she's aware of them also, and, uh, we have some work to do on that this week. Fern and I do. Um, I was going through some of my stuff yesterday, and I received from Karen Dowell, um, something about the CARES Act for county social services, and I'm not sure why she sent it to me, if there's something I was supposed to do with it, because when I read through it, it talks about, um, mental health funding, like for schools, and, so I'm going to pass this to you then.
Okay, if I, if I remember right, I think it's, um, we, um, county social services got, I can't remember exactly how much money, um, that can be used for CARES Act, so I think she was reaching out to each county to see if there was something, um, that we're doing or that the schools are doing that they can help fund, to use that money. It can only be used for, um, Corona, um, things like that, to help with, uh, mental health issues and things like that.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I thought, it was not anything the county needed to do, but, but I wanted to check if...
Just so everybody knows, there is money out there, that if they have something that there's going to be, you know, that they can reach out, they can help.
Okay. Um, also, I sent a note off to John Beatty after last week's meeting, asking him to give us a description of what village members do, and with the civil service staff, they gave you a copy of it, because some of you said you had people interested, but they wanted to know what it entails. So if you need additional copies of that, we can make more for you, or you can always stop back in and get more from me. And that's all I have at this point. Oh, um, I applied for the Iowa CARES Act as far as election equipment goes. For the primary, the county, um, had applied for 3,000 dollars, you got so much per precinct and then an additional amount for your absentee, and it was to provide personal protective equipment for that election. For the general coming up, our amount is 16,000, it's 3,000 per precinct. And it's also for the same thing, personal protective equipment, um, any additional machinery that we may need. Um, I was talking to Rick on Friday, we already purchased a machine that opens up envelopes, so when those absentee ballots come back, there's an outer envelope that you have to take off to make sure that David signed and everything's in good shape, and then we have to open them up in the absentee board, you know, slips out the secrecy sleeve with the ballot in. We're expecting unprecedented numbers of absentee requests, so this would save a ton of time in taking a letter opener and individually opening every single one of those. Um, so we've got a letter opener and we also got a letter folder, so there's a lot of our, uh, election equipment that we send out that either has to be folded this way or sometimes the ballots have to be folded this way to go in the envelope. So instead of us taking who knows how many hours sitting here just folding, we have a machine that will just boom, 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 fold them all for us. Those costs can be recouped under this government grant. Uh, we also ordered for the absentee board, the OBO that we currently use that sits on the ballot box counts the ballots, but it's very slow as far as multiple, when you're doing huge amounts. And when you put the tape at the end of the night, it takes forever for the primary, took it a long time to print out, and we're trying to get election results and we have to wait for the tape to print. So there was a new machine, um, FTI or FVI, I'm trying to think of terminology for it, but it's a faster counting machine used just for absentee precincts. So I went ahead and ordered that. So between the three things, it'll just about cover, I mean, just about use up all the 16,000. But all those things will be used for election purposes, and that's what the intent was. Most of our personal protection equipment is being supplied by people who have donated to the Secretary of State, there's different groups. Um, we're getting masks from them and hand sanitizer and social distancing signs and...
You got all, you got all the Plexiglas stuff from them or...
Yeah, we've already got our Plexiglas. Um, we, we even got some special, um, secrecy sleeves, because we don't want to use our permanent secrecy sleeves, because once they've been touched, you have to throw them away. So... So, we ordered some that are a cheaper price, but yet they'll be mass-produced at, like Story Kenworthy, and Ames or Waterloo. So, that way, we don't have to personally print them ourselves and fold them half with a machine. We can let them come from there, so that'll take up some of that money. Plus, we'll have additional postage we'll have to use in sending those ballots out. So, we expect that money to go very quickly. We also have an additional grant, the local government CARES grant, and I need to contact ISAC on that today. It's due tomorrow, but I think we pretty much discussed, and then I also talked with Carrie McCarty, who had visited with the sheriff and some of the people down at the LEC. They didn't feel like they had purchased enough personal protection equipment from March, when COVID hit, through July 31st. They were thinking total expenses for them would've been maybe $5,000. Less than that for us. It's just not worth it to file for that. So, the next period is from then August through December. That's when our big costs are gonna come in, and we'll apply for that money. So, that'll give us some extra time. But I'm wondering if I can call Linda Frieders and have her help me fill out the paperwork for that when it comes time. I'm not used to filling out grant paperwork. All of these things that we would like to apply for in the grant, you have to apply to FEMA first, and then if FEMA deny issues, then Iowa will pick it up. Well, they're not gonna file for FEMA for that other stuff, so I can't rely on anybody to file for FEMA for this either, so I'll need somebody to help me with that part of it, 'cause I've never filed a FEMA grant format.
Yeah, and you want it done correctly.
And you have someone that has done that before, you mentioned?
Yep, yeah, Linda has worked with grants for us.
I'd recommend Linda.
And she's very good. And just, I mean, I just don't have time to set and figure this out with elections coming up and everything else that we've got going, so.
I think that's a very good idea, and now this opportunity.
Yeah, there's just a lot more other work to do. So, I would really appreciate if that is all right with you guys.
Yeah, you don't wanna miss that.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that by the time it gets to FEMA, after all the mess they got going with the, like Ben said earlier, they probably gotta get it sat on somebody's desk anyway.
Yeah.
With the drapeful down there and all the stuff for damages, but
Exactly.
if you don't fill it out, you can't
Yeah, you gotta go through the process.
to get it, so.
And I think our share was like $124,000 or $140,000, somewhere in there. It's not a huge amount of money, but it would help.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And I know there was something recorder had mentioned that would fall under the grant money that she could apply for, so I wanna make sure that gets included in there also.
Just so you all know, Trish brought
Yeah, I seen that, yeah.
Did you guys get this bill around?
Yes, we did.
They did?
It sounds positive.
Well, at least something's moving forward.
We're in contact, at least.
Yep. Dorsey and stuff.
And I think everybody got their taxes. My phone's been ringing off the hook, and everybody and your brother's been yelling at me. Why did you raise taxes? We did not raise taxes. We lowered taxes in our budget, but the evaluation of the houses went up. Therefore, the taxes raised.
And the valuation is based off of sales.
That's a good thing.
They don't just pull the number out of the air.
It's a positive thing for Humboldt.
I even got scolded by someone that I share my house with.
You too?
She looked at me like, whoa, honey, that's what happened. It's good valuation.
Good description, Dave.
But you gotta explain it to the people. We didn't raise them, we lowered our part. The evaluation of your property went up.
Well, like Sandy said, that's a good thing.
It is.
You don't wanna live in a
Community area where a bell is ringing.
We're trying to grow Humboldt and county, and trying to get people to come in.
Just for the record. Good description, Dave, to people. Good description, Dave. You covered all that.
Yeah.
Please get the last thing done, that is more than welcome to.
I figured if I get her on board now, then by the time we have to file it, she'll be
Absolutely. So, do we have anything else till we get to the canvassing of the option sales tax?
Motion to recess the Board of Supervisors and convene at the Board of Canvassers.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All of us, we are canvassing.
Okay, this will not take a lot of time.
I'm gonna need a
Basically, yes and no.
paper down.
We're getting awful hot.
There's no maybes on here, so there's no right and
I don't know what I can throw away in my drawer.
You'll find when you open up the tally book, that there's a sheet in here. All you have to do is go down to the yes and no's. Please tell me what public measure you're doing, 'cause there's several public measures. Like, this one is public measure B, public measure D, and public measure L. And then tell me the yes and no's for B, the yes and no's for D, and the yes and no's for L. And then it's done.
All right.
So, there are 2, 4, 6, 8. Give them up however you want to.
Here, you just take them all.
How much did you take? Did you grab two there?
Yeah, I got two. Well, I know this one's extremely small.
Yeah, I know, but you, I'll put two.
I'll put over there.
I know it's really easy.
Say that again, what we're really looking at.
We're looking at the tape, and you're looking for what's called a measure letter.
Okay.
So, say like, what's the first one on yours, if you kind of
Public measure B.
Okay, so public measure B had how many yeses and how many no's?
Do I need to tell you that this is from Avery North Weaver?
Yes, that helps too.
Okay, so, I start with Avery North Weaver in Humboldt County. So, if I'm just going off of the tape, I'm starting with public measure B.
And that is the city of Bradgate, just for your information.
We have yes votes of 10 and zero no votes. Public measure D.
Which is Gilmore City.
We have 10 yes votes, 0 no votes. Public measure L.
Okay, and that is the unincorporated area. Let's get back to my page here.
We have
The page is stuck, sorry.
Want to get to the page?
Got it.
Public measure L, 3 yes votes, 0 no votes. Is there anything else in this precinct?
Do you wanna do both of them?
Yes, that's a do. Okay, we have the precinct of Dakota City, Robe. And, into the tape here. All right, and that precinct, public measure C.
And C is the combined Humboldt-Dakota City ballot. It has to pass in both communities for that local option to go through.
So, for public measure C, we have 25 yes votes and 3 no votes. Public measure L.
And that's the unincorporated area again. Let's get back to that. Okay.
For that precinct, there is 10 yes votes and 2 no votes. Anything else on these two?
That's it.
Great, did you wanna ask Peggy your question about what you asked before? If someone doesn't, didn't have any votes?
Oh, she already told me that.
Oh, she didn't?
I talked about that on Thursday.
Oh, what is the answer?
Can we do the canvassing?
Yeah, let's do it.
We have to announce that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
All right, I have Delana, Wakusta, North, and Rutland. Okay, public measure A.
That is Boe, city of Boe.
Okay, public measure A is 32 yes, 0 no. Public measure H.
Which is the city of Addison.
7 yes, 0 no. Public measure L.
Which is the unincorporated area.
Which is, there's 5 yes and 0 no. Then I have Humboldt, 1, 2, and 3. Public measure C.
Which again is the combined Dakota City-Humboldt ballot.
Excuse me. I'm struggling, struggling to read that. Public measure C, yes 101, no 30. Public measure J.
Which is the city of Rutland.
Yes, 0, no, 0. So, there was no votes cast. Public measure L, yes 18, no 1. That is even done.
That's both of yours?
That's both of mine.
Yeah, I got something on, but I'll get it out here. I have Humboldt and West Vernon. All right, um, public measure F.
City of Livermore.
I have 22 yes, 7 no. Public measure G.
City of Leverne.
Is 0 yes, 0 no. Public L.
The unincorporated area.
That's 2 yes, 0 no.
Okay.
That's it. North Lake, or North Lake East Vernon. All right, public measure E.
City of Hardy.
1 yes, 0 no. Public measure I, 5
City of Redwood.
5 yes, 0 no. Public measure L.
The unincorporated area.
3 yes, 0 no.
Okay.
That should be it.
Well, I was lucky and got the absentee ballot votes again.
Okay.
We did everything there. Okay, um, public measure A.
Which is the city of Boe.
Um, there were 0 yeses and 0 nos. Public measure B.
City of Bradgate.
Yes, 1, no, 0. Public measure C.
Dakota City-Humboldt.
Yes, 28, no, 6. Public measure D.
Gilmore City.
Yes, 0, no, 2. Public measure E, 0 for both yes and no.
And that is Hardy.
Public measure F.
Okay, wait a minute, just a second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, there's the zeros. Public measure F.
Is Livermore. Yes, 2, no, 0. Public measure G, both yes and no, 0. Public measure H, again, yes and no, 0.
That's Addison.
Public measure I, yes 2
I is Redwood.
No, 0. Public measure J.
J is Rutland.
Yes and no, 0. Public measure K, yes and no, 0. Public measure L.
Incorporated.
Yes, 8, no, 1. That's it.
All right.
Okay, I got South Lake, Norway, North Norway.
Thank you.
Public measure K.
City of Thor.
Yes, 20, no, 1. Public measure L.
Unincorporated area.
Yes, 2, no, 0. That's it.
Okay, so for purposes of this election, public measure A, city of Boe passed. Public measure B, city of Bradgate passed. Public measure C, which was Dakota City and Humboldt, passed. Public measure D, which is the city of Gilmore City, passed. Find E here. Public measure E, city of Hardy, passed. Public measure F, for the city of Livermore, passed. Public measure G, for the city of Leverne, did not pass. Public measure H, for the city of Addison, passed. Public measure I, for the city of Redwood, passed. Public measure J, for the city of Rutland, did not pass. Public measure K, for the city of Thor, passed. And public measure L, for the unincorporated, passed. Those communities that did not pass the local option sales tax have a choice. They can either leave things as they are, and they just will not receive the local option sales tax, or there is a chance for one more special election before the timeframe runs out in June of next year. So, the only part of Leverne that this affects is the one street that's on the Humboldt County side. The other part of Leverne, which has the business that it belongs to Cassius County, so they have their own local option. So, I don't know if I will hear from Leverne or not, I may. I will let Rutland know how this turned out. We'll send them, we have abstracts for you to sign, two copies for everything.
You would think they would want to pass it. Now, we've already got the elevator there on the south side, so.
Okay, okay.
You would think they would want it.
Yeah. So, if they don't pass it, where does that money go that would've went to that?
It gets distributed back to the rest of
Rest of the county?
Yeah.
Okay.
It just goes to their community.
Riverside, all these?
Yeah. Hopefully, take paper cups off, if that makes it easier.
Too bad they couldn't have gotten just one person to go vote.
It appears that one other community did that, and it went through.
I know, exactly.
Yeah.
If all it would've taken was one vote.
This is why we always encourage people, you say your vote doesn't count. It shows you how important it is, those votes are, and what a difference it can make to your community.
So, what was Rutland and Leverne?
No votes at all.
Was that the only two?
The only two, right.
And we put a shout out to the poll workers who put in their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything they do.
Yeah, they did a great job for us again.
It was a long day.
It is a long day.
Yeah. And in some of the smaller communities, they're not
Pretty boring day for some of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can you imagine?
I told them to rest up, 'cause they're not gonna get that at the next election. Don't be like if they get time to eat.
Were you adjourned?
Yep.
Were you adjourned?
Well, it says, do we have, yeah, we can adjourn as canvassers, yes.
Were you adjourned as board of canvassers?
I will second.
You gotta declare the results on public measures.
That's what I just did when I read the
So, we got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All of us. Now, people are first reading
I'm sorry, I probably should've had you made a motion declaring the results. Can we go back in?
Yes.
I would make that motion to declare the results on the public measure.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of us. Got that done. And I guess we've already adjourned as the canvassers. Now, the first reading of ordinance number 72, establishing local option sales and service tax in Humboldt County.
Along with the abstracts that are coming around for you to sign, and here's the canvass
Will we all sign them?
Yep, you all sign the abstracts.
Writer's grant is coming.
You all sign the campus book on that first page there. We're required to file with the Department of Revenue an ordinance stating the communities that pass the local option sales tax. We also have to tell the rate of the tax, which is 1%. We have to tell if there's a sunset clause, and we do, it starts July 1, 2021, goes through June 30, 2031. And I have it here for you to review, if you would like. And we can either approve the first reading, and then address the issue of whether we want to waive the second and third reading.
What do we sign this to?
Well, you gotta wait till you make a motion, or whatever you wanna do. Okay, I would make the motion to waive.
Well, we need approval
Now, you're on first. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she said
No, we need approval of the first reading.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll start with it.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, I was just going to say, the language that is on that form is not language I have come up with. It is language proposed, or it comes from the Department of Revenue. They say this is what you need to put on your resolution. So it's standard.
Be out here by 10:30.
All you do is insert your community's a pass. So no one there does it saying, hey, he raised $50,000. I think it's just, you don't get a bonus at the end.
You should, you were to take the paperclip off it.
Have to throw a little bit of paper in there.
Okay, yeah. So we have a motion to approve the first reading. Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Do we approve that? We got that passed?
No, we haven't heard.
Okay. Is there any discussion for more? All those in favor?
Aye.
All's. Okay. So now, do we have the first reading or did you just give us the description that it's basically a?
Nope, that was the first reading. So now you have the option of either having another reading next week or waiving that second and third reading and passing it today.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third reading and move it forward for the vote.
I will second his next motion.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All's. Waive? Now, do we need to have a tip? We're good to go with ordinance number 72 then?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
I know. There's like areas that would.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All's, we are adjourned.